Alderman Lazara.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky. Alderman Ray Wesley. Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from January eighth, two thousand and fifteen.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? That passes. Report and recommendation repairs to booster pump number eleven in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars. I'm going to turn that over to Matt York.
Yes, thank you Alderman. Couple of weeks ago, or a couple of months ago, we had brought together, brought forth a booster pump repair for number nine at the same location. Since that has taken place, we were doing some further inspections, our weekly inspections. And somewhere around the middle of December, we found that booster pump eleven was making some weird noises. The booster pumps allow the water to go from the reservoirs out into the, out into the public for consumption. So at that time, we had booster pump eleven scheduled for replacement in next fiscal year. And we decided that with a consultation with the contractor, that that pump isn't going to make it until May. So that's why we would like the ability to have that pump fixed now.
Any questions? Eugene?
Matt, what, where is that booster station at first?
That's, that's at the Potter Street Station.
It's Potter?
Yeah.
And then, is there enough money in the budget to cover this?
Yes, yes, there's a budget.
It's all.
Yeah, there's money left in the account for that one.
Now Matt, I know you were saying that we have these booster pumps on a schedule. Can you kind of go over that a little bit, please?
Yeah, just real quickly, we have five booster pumps and three well pumps. We tried to get them repaired on a ten-year basis. Booster pump nine was sixteen years out since its last repair. And booster pump eleven is fourteen years out since its last repair. All the other ones are scheduled out between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty-three to be repaired on a ten-year annual cycle, or a ten-year cycle. So these are the only two that have, have fallen off the wagon based upon those ten-year cycles. So those are the two that we need to get fixed right away.
Alderman Jacobs?
You, you said they're repaired, I mean, do we ever replace them, or is it just typically a simple thing, a repair takes care of it?
Yeah, it's a, it's a total rehab. We, we got the whole entire pump. A, a pump itself is going to cost probably a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Whereas the replacement is, is like twelve thousand, eleven thousand something. So you take the whole thing out, new bearings, new impellers, new motor, you know, fix the motor, make sure the gears are right, timing's right. So it's, it's a prudent thing to do at this time.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we made the motion. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to repair the booster pump for eleven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
Okay. Roll call?
Alderman Lazara.
Yes.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Catalano.
Yes.
Alderman Woods.
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings. Tree code update in the winter. Anything else anyone like to add? Go ahead, Eugene.
I would, I would like the staff to look at, obviously we had problems with, and sure you got the email about the electrical problem at the training station. I just wanted to see what the ballpark price would be to upgrade it. In the last memo we received, it says we might consider upgrading it. So I would like them to do some pricing on that.
Okay, Matt?
See whatever we go.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.
I'll call the finance committee in order. Make the minute taker know the same people are present except for add Roy Wesley in.
I'm here.
Okay. I need, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes on January eighth, two thousand and fifteenth. That is my motion.
Second.
Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Report and recommendation is capital improvement plan. Who's, how do you want to handle this Brad? Want to take each section and, you guys bring your CIP book or in the iPad?
Do have a couple of, we do have a couple of extra hard copies in case.
Hard copy. You know. Uh, go ahead Brad.
Sure, thank you Mr. Chairman. Yes, as we've done the past few years, we would prefer it from just an organizational standpoint to kind of go through it section by section. That way we'll talk about the transportation section. We did combine buildings and grounds and miscellaneous into newly dubbed non-transportation section. And then the water and sewer section. Yeah, that being said, we also this year, there have been some requests for a project map. So if you go to page seven of the hard, the hard document, I believe it's page nine or ten of the, page ten of the, of the CIP. There is a map in there, a project map. This is our first draft of that. So if anybody has any comments or suggestions, we'd be more than happy to, you know, change the map or, you know, modify the map a little bit to, to those requests.
The only request that I would say is if you could widen the street names a little better in the map? I'm sorry, I, I mean, it's a little small.
Sure.
It's just Ward four, that the streets are smaller.
Continue. Other than that, I think it was great. I mean, well, well put together.
Thank you. Yeah, we could thank the building department for the, for the maps. Going on to the next page is the high level projections. As you can see, it's projected each year between the general capital, which is transportation, non-transportation, and the water and sewer sections. On grand totals and then through the, through the scope of this booklet, if everything were to happen exactly as presented. You know, the spend on this would be a little over thirty-eight point three million dollars over the next five years. Going on to the next page, which is a little more exciting, the, the cash flow performance. You'll see that the general fund, the general capital side, each year ends in the black with a positive cash balance. Just under a million the first year, two twenty, two hundred and twenty thousand, six ninety-two, two point eight million, three point one million. Part of the, the reason for that increase, significant increase in fiscal nineteen, fiscal twenty, is the Ward two project wraps up in fiscal eighteen. And so the costs associated with those projects have rolled off. And we're waiting for the streets efficiency study by and large to kind of plan the next significant reconstruction projects. Those two years and next year's CIP will have some more obligated dollars posed to them. But right now, that's where we're at with that structure. The bottom portion of the page, just slide down a little bit. On the right. Yeah. So the water section, you'll see we're projected to end this fiscal year with a nineteen thousand dollar cash balance. And then seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, all are projected to end with a negative cash balance to the capital side. You know, while we'll say, you know, tonight, you know, we're looking only at fiscal sixteen. I know there's a couple of projects in seventeen that if, if you kind of, if seventeen gets righted, then, then it'll fix all the subsequent years.
Okay, we have a couple of questions.
Of course.
Yeah, real quick, actually, I just talked to Brad about that. It's one of my concerns. And basically what's going on is in seventeen, we have the water tower, replacement of the water tower, which we've never decided to replace the water tower. It was talked about. The other discussion was to probably paint the water tower, which would only be about four hundred thousand, which would, instead of, that would take a million dollars and put it back into the cash. Just so everybody's aware.
That's in the book, still go through.
Right, no, no, but that's why the number is, staff has put that water tower in there, but again, we can always take it out.
So just, I just wanted to point those out in the cash flows as, as we're going through it, so. The next two pages of the booklet has been the last couple of years of the summary. So if you're trying to figure out what's in a particular year, you just say, okay, here's all of the projects in fiscal sixteen. And their, their estimated cost at this point. The next page is seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty going forward. So again, tonight, we'd really like by and large to focus on the sixteen, fiscal sixteen projects. Obviously, there's some engineering that gets into the fiscal seventeen projects, such as the water tower, a couple of, you know, stormwater roadway projects, et cetera. So with that, you know, try and, try and get through this as, as productively as we can. So we'll probably try to go through, through each, each page moving forward, so Tammy if you want to.
First one is the bike pedestrian bridge, or over at Green Park Road.
Yeah, and just, just to remind everybody, we're not trying to ignore the out years. But you know, when we build the budget, we build it around the sixteen numbers and everything else is perspective and planning. So we're not, we're not trying to ignore them. But we're trying also not to, to get drawn into the long conversations on something in two thousand and twenty that's going to change by the time we get there, so.
Okay. The bike, bike bridge first?
Bike bridge, yes, so correct.
What? It's slated for, the bike bridge for this year with design and then two thousand and sixteen, it's earmarked for ten thousand dollars for design. What are we doing to the bike bridge? I thought we were only, I, I know it says include power washing and sealing that decorated blocks. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we had Baxter Woodman, we had Baxter Woodman initiate the study that was done. I'm pretty sure we gave that to the council a while ago, but if we forgot about it, we can put it back in so we can refamiliarize ourselves with it. But it was just some minor fixes, just to make sure we keep up with the maintenance of the bridge. We originally in previous CIPs actually had a lot more budgeted. And after we did the study, the number came way down, so.
But, but in that report that they do, I know cars don't go over the bridge, that they do a structure.
They did a structural safety examination, yeah.
Because I know the bridge's been there for some, some a year. So that's part of the.
Part of the study, yeah.
Okay, and you, Mr. Jacob?
Just out of curiosity, how often do we have to do work to the bridge? Do we have to do work there every year, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, next page.
Did you get the answer?
Yeah.
Okay. The other one is Forest View Harvey Edgewood reconstruction drainage.
Correct. So this page has changed a little bit from last year. So the.
The mouse is sticking.
Okay.
High-tech equipment here?
Haven't, first time using it, so. So, so this one's changed a little bit, if you can scroll down a little bit on the side. Previous years, as you may recall, had one design element for two years of the project. And then one firm had the two-year supervision contract. Going forward, especially since the other side of the creek, apparently there's not the interconnects. Based upon past experiences, staff felt it prudent to not award a two-year contract for the other side of the creek. So we changed it from one design consultant to one construction supervision contract for the two years to two one-year contracts. I said, based on some, some recent experiences. And then the fiscal eighteen was always a standalone contract, but that's a separate contract as well. So the, the numbers are roughly the same, just kind of how it was spread out. And like I said, the design, two design contracts going forward instead of the one. Otherwise, it's functionally the same, finish the, the north half of the east side this year and then go to the west side of the creek the following two years.
The other half of those road projects going on now? Construction supervisor? Huh? No, the other part of next year.
The, the north half, okay.
I understand that, but is that going to change price? And what does it increase on that?
Mr. York opine on that?
Right now, we don't really know what the price is going to be. We haven't really gone, gone any further with that. It may, it may change what we have, but we don't know yet.
Will it? Go ahead, Jeff.
Probably better to talk about that in a different forum.
All right, well, we'll skip that one right now.
And, and, and just, we'll, we'll know more, we get to the, to the budget when we do the final approval in March, April, we'll be able to more adequately address that question.
But going through this tonight is, is our direction to, for you guys are probably going to ask to pass the CIP. At the end, I mean, it is, at the end of night, tonight.
Why don't we just skip that section out?
So I would like that removed right now until we find out where that is. Go ahead Mayor.
Passing the CIP, but again, it's going to go to budget. And that's when you can take it out.
Okay.
Like, like the water tower's in here now. If we still feel we don't want to do the water tower, we don't even have to take it out this year's budget, it'll be next year's budget anyways, or the year after.
Okay, so.
So.
Why do we sit there and go over CIP?
Well, just to make sure, sometimes you add projects.
Aye, that's fine.
Sometimes we take projects.
Aye, so any other questions on that one? I think we might have to help that. All right. Citywide stormwater master plan.
Sure, yeah, thank you Mr. Chairman. This one underwent some change from last year's study. And there were some discussions, the fiscal sixteen project is the same, because the engineering had already begun on that. However, the fiscal seventeen project in this year is different than the fiscal seventeen project that was in last year. Areas one, two, and one four, as you'll see on the next page, and area one, five were flipped. So that means that later that she will start the design of the station park Potter and Prospect area. And so which, which apparently due to some cash flow issues and also talking to the, the Alderman from that ward, we, we made that switch to flip-flop those two projects. And it, it fit nicely into the program, so we did make that switch. Like I said, it's only a couple, I think that one moved up two or three years and, and everything else just moved back one year, so. Not, not really significant change, but it seems like it'll help out a lot of them. The Station Park Potter Prospect project.
That got moved up.
It got, that got moved up, correct. Sure, then the Forest Reserve Gilbert got pushed back one year. And then the Miller and associated detention base area got pushed back one year as well.
Just, just to remind everybody that probably about a year or two ago, we had applied for some stormwater funding from the state. And we've been continually monitoring that and requesting more information and pushing that along. And I do think we're at a point now where we are going to get the funding. And while not guaranteed, there may be an opportunity to maybe move some stuff up. Or maintain this current course and get some funding. So we're talking six-figure funding. It's not official, but I'm pretty sure we're going to get that stormwater grant. And we'll probably find out within the next month or two, hopefully, but it's, it's significant dollars. Free and clear, one hundred percent, no match. So I think we are going to get that finally.
Go ahead Frank.
Jeff, is that federal money or is that state money?
No, it's state money.
Peter Jacob?
I guess I just want to ask the Alderman Catalano here, this is his ward. By move, by switching the projects, is that what's the best to do for your ward? Because I know you have a lot of flooding issues over there.
I don't, I don't have to remind you, what happened last year, we got flooded twice in that area. And it impacted more than fifty families. And that's the reason why, yeah, that's the reason why we're changing this. And also engineering starts this next fiscal year, starting in May, around that time? Okay.
So we approve it in the budget?
Why, yeah, exactly.
Is it, was that your question?
Yes, thanks.
Mayor?
Yeah, then the other thing is, streets efficiency study be happening. And Forest Preserve has some issues over there also, so we'll have some decisions to make depending what, how that streets efficiency study comes out.
Well, so that's going to include part of Ward two station, so.
Anyone else? Okay. Liz Park, a detention basin.
Yeah, the next two projects are the detention bases that we've been having some pretty serious discussions on, the Elizabeth Court retention ponds. And the next page is then the Potter Street ponds. So which have reflected in the construction number for both of these projects was the cost estimate that was presented at the committee meetings. Both of these, we have applied for sort of twenty-five percent grant from the county. However, at this time, not knowing if we've actually received either of those, we, we have to budget the full amount. And then if we receive those funds, then, then obviously we'll apply them to those and then won't have to spend, you know, there's much money on them because of the grant money. It'll free up some money theoretically in the future.
The Potter's, the Potter Street, what, what do we determine on, on Potter Street? Do we determine the rain garden? Because I thought the price was coming back different. Because I looked at the price, I thought his price might be higher. Not a hundred and ten. I thought he had two prices and he was coming back with sort of a price. So I mean, what is actually, is, is that a number that we officially got? Or is that a wishing number that, this is the low end of it? It could come up higher because if we choose to go with different perspective, right? He was supposed to come back with some numbers.
I mean, and going through the notes from the last time he was here.
Yeah.
That was within a few dollars, the number that was getting kicked around that night. If they come back with different numbers before we formally approve the budget, then so that we can update it. But from that last meeting, this was, was the number that was.
So will he have the hard numbers for us by, by the time we talk about the budget? Yes or no, Jeff?
I mean, we'll have engineer estimate numbers. We won't have hard numbers until it's bidded, but we'll have an engineering estimate and that's what this hundred and ten thousand is. It's an engineer estimate for the project as, as shown to the council.
As a rain garden or not rain garden? Go ahead.
No, it's, it's, it's as a rain garden and that's how we qualify for the grant. And I think we should have some potential grant feedback by that time as well.
So the total cost of this project, if, if, if we go to their, their costs, they estimate it. That pond is going to cost a hundred and ten thousand dollars and Elizabeth Park will cost a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Yes.
Without the grant.
Without those numbers, yeah.
So if we get the grant, that will come down. Okay. Frank, is there, do you have a question?
No, you just answer.
Okay. Mr. Jacob?
Will we know about the grant money before budget time? Do you know when we're going to find that out?
Mr. Murray?
I've got to look at the date. We may receive something by then. I'll go back and I'll check what the date.
I believe our finance nodding her head, it's a yes or no.
March.
March.
Okay. All right, any other questions on that? Bussy Woods? I believe, who's, who's heading this one? Is this, go ahead.
Yeah, what this is, is you may remember, we, we passed some IGAs that said we'd participate in the project way back when they first started the study. This is for the assumed construction of the project. We don't know if we'll actually have to pay this fifty thousand dollars. There may be a grant that's received from Elk Grove who's heading up the project, where we may not have to pay. But I think this was the worst-case scenario number out of their cost estimate that we would need to pay as a worst-case scenario.
Okay, I, I'm going to ask the question on this one. Fifty thousand dollars. Have we had, have we seen any of those documents on what we, how many towns are in to this project? Mayor, you know how many towns? Obviously you got your hands up.
No, I wasn't going to answer that, but go ahead Jeff.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't have the exact number on how many towns. I could go back and look at the IGA, but I mean, I think all of our neighbors were, were in the study.
Yeah, but I'd really like to see where the money's going. Because right now, I haven't seen the report or, or what.
Well, the, the initial monies we spent were very minimal. I think there were a couple of thousand dollars towards the study, which everybody chipped in their portion.
Right, and the study eventually came back and our own engineer, when he had it in-house, said this does not benefit us as well.
Well, well, that was, that was a long time ago. The, the new numbers show that it could benefit us.
I, I like to see those new numbers, if that's the case. Because we took our own engineer and said it does not benefit us, why are we even still staying in this program?
Like I said, that was, that was an older.
Go ahead.
Way back then, it was a different project, they, they tweaked it, now it's going to be a weir. Basically, after we got those first numbers, you're right, the engineer said there wasn't a lot of benefit to us. The county stepped in, asked for some specific water modelings and whatnot, and they changed it to a weir versus the dam going up and down. And basically, the county has said in pro, in rains, ten to twenty-five year rainstorm events, will see significant improvement. Naturally, hundred-year, three-hundred-year floods, you know, we're going to, we're still going to flood. But after, and I had this discussion with Mr. Charlton, being on the stormwater committee now. He said, there's a possibility of probably opening the gates about six inches sooner than we do now. Again, he said that, I, I think, I, I think we passed that information along to you guys when then we found out. We've also talked to ITASK. ITASK also sat with the chairman of the stormwater committee. And also they reiterated, there's a possibility we'll be able to get, open those gates earlier. Well, I spoke to Mayor Prine actually last night, we had this conversation again. We really need to meet with those guys, sit down and get them to give us something in writing. Because nothing's been given in writing. So until we get it in writing, you know, let's face it.
Well, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
But the improvements, you know, there is benefit to us. We'll be, there'll be even more benefit if we get those gates open six inches earlier.
Well, that changed from the time when we first started this project.
That was two years ago.
Peter Jacob?
Question for the mayor. Is this project definitely happening? I, I know you've been going to the meetings, is this a definite go on this, or?
Jeff, didn't you put something in the, I thought we put something in the management report?
You know what I'll do? I'll redistribute the study itself in tomorrow's packet. And then I'll give you the latest and greatest update we got from the project leaders, but.
I'll give it to you right now. They're going out to bid supposedly the end of March, April. Supposed to start construction first week of August, should be completed Thanksgiving, the project.
What?
There's grant money. Half, half of the project is by grant money. And then, I believe Elk Grove said they put, they're putting in a million dollars. That was their, that was their share all along. And because of the grant money, we may not even have to put in anything. But again, they're work, they're finalizing the IGAs between County and DuPage County. But again, they're work, they're finalizing the IGAs between County and DuPage County and the Forest Preserves. And by March, the end of March, April, we should have more answers.
Okay.
Definite answers. But that's, the goal right now is, by Thanksgiving, it should be operational. And I'm not sure if, even if, you know, ITASKA and ourselves get together to meet with the county, if we're gonna get a straight answer until they finish all those IGAs and whatnot.
Okay. Any else? All right, next. Page twenty. The street research and sidewalk replacement.
Correct. So, this page, you'll see there in the narrative section, description of the project in bold, that we're doing the new streets efficiency study this year. So we'll be going out for that early in the year. Which is why, on the next page, you'll see that fiscal eighteen, nineteen, and twenty are all very nebulous, and they just say, these years will be loaded in based upon the results of the streets efficiency study. Fiscal sixteen, obviously, we had, you know, engineering done, and those line up with the stormwater projects. Fiscal seventeen, there are roads programmed in there, by and large, due to the fact that the Mill Road Water Replacement is programmed in fiscal seventeen. And in an effort, you know, to line up all the projects, you're doing the underground, do the above ground, not have to tear it up two years later. The Mill Road area is programmed in fiscal seventeen, which is why those are already in there.
Mayor, all members.
Go ahead.
Mayor, please, go ahead.
Go, it's your honor.
Go. Mayor, please, go ahead.
Brad, the Mill Road, that's, that's all we're doing, correct? Is ITASKA on the same timeline?
Jeff Murmurs? Murmurs?
Yeah, we've been, we reached out to ITASKA, they're on board. We don't have anything formal and writing as of yet, but they're aware of the project, their public works and their manager, they know about it. They only have a small chunk, actually, chunks of the project.
Alman Roy Wesley?
You know, I just tried to go through this whole book right now about sidewalks. And you have, the whole thing is on design, I use for sidewalks and gutters, curbs. Are we not doing any sidewalks at all? Replacing cracked sidewalks or anything else? And then also with the curbs too?
If you're talking about, like a preventative sidewalk program, when we go around and look at the squares and replace the broken ones, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, where would that be?
That's gonna be in the budget as part of a line item in the budget.
Okay.
We'll have that in the.
You can understand where I'm saying, that I wouldn't see it in.
Yeah, it's in the budget now in the CFP as a preventative maintenance program.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one more question.
Alman Roy Wesley?
Could I go to twenty-one?
What?
Could I go to page twenty-one or no?
Sure. Sure, go. Are you running my meeting this way?
No.
Just moving it along.
No. I see that for the next three years on twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, like Forest View, you have quarter for each. Can we push, try to push those up to two years instead of three years, like sixteen, seventeen? Just finish it up in those two years?
Yeah, I think the, the way that it's spread out.
We got everything in Ward One.
The way that it was spread out was the, because each street's a fairly costly endeavor. And so the way the cash flows worked out, we effectively had to do one street a year for each of the four years. This would be year one. And we did half of two streets. They were doing half of two streets, so effectively we're doing one street a year, and then one street each of the next two years on the other side of the creek.
Because it just seems like that's an awful long time to do that. And then here you look at Royal Oaks, all those streets in there, and the area that we did that, we did that all in one year. So.
Well, the thing is with that, is that it's a budget.
Mayor, please?
Honestly, when it came to the Edgebrook and Oakwood, I asked, I go, can we do these streets? Two, all, both of them together, and the engineer said, because of the stuff for the creek, and the Army Corps Engineers, and going under the creek and all this stuff, we may never even finish one street, let alone half of the two. Believe me, I would, I would have loved it, because naturally, bid a bigger project, you're gonna get a better price, like we did in Royal Oaks. They won't do it.
Who won't do it?
The engineer says it can't be done with all the stuff that's going on with creek and everything.
I don't, I don't believe that. Look at, look at the way they're building over there. Say you can't do it. You can do anything you want.
We can ask again, I'd be happy.
I say we'll look at that down line, two thousand and eighteen, I mean. Engineers have always been wrong too, so, go ahead.
Well, when you go to bid for the next two streets,
Right.
for Forest View and Harvey, I mean, you can see, if you can get it done in one year, that would be great.
Right.
I know we're gonna get a better price. But if they tell you the same thing, I mean, just be aware, they might tell you the same thing, regardless of who the engineer gets the job at that point.
Let's see.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, and just, the other thing, just again, you know, from a cash flow standpoint, I mean, Royal Oaks, I think, was a little over two million dollars. And all four of those streets, the original price tag was a little over eight million. So, not disagreeing with the sentiment, but just.
So what was the problem?
You know, just from a cash flow standpoint. But if you can do both of them and save money, you know, ten amount to what was saved over in the Royal Oaks project, then yeah, it perhaps becomes feasible at that point.
Mr. Woods?
Well, just to add to the background of that, it was the, I think the thing the engineers were pushing was, you couldn't do one side of the creek, both streets at the same time, because if there was flooding, that would be a major catastrophe. If you divide it up, probably did half of one side of the creek and half of the other, because they're not linked or related, that would probably be a possibility, although we've already planned it out, so I don't know how you
Right.
move those dollars up. But that, that was the dividing, or that was the, you know, the guiding thing in that project, was tying up both, both of those streets on one side of the creek. And you'd have no access in or out of there.
Okay. Any tales on that? Okay.
Page twenty-two. Woodrow Road, Assam Road, pedestrian.
Correct, Ian, this project has been here for a couple of years, and it is going to be, Mr. York can opine on this a little bit, it either has been bid out, or is about to be bid out here this spring, and actually completed.
Go ahead.
This project has been bid out, it was delayed. You guys were informed last fall of the delay due to the weather and the late bidding process through IDOT. This project will begin in March. Actually, just started receiving status updates yesterday on this project, so we're moving forward. Hopefully, we'll start in March. If not that, early April, project should be done sometime in June.
So this is a re-budget?
Yeah, it's a re-budget. Price is the same though as it was before.
A re-budget?
It was, it was currently scheduled for this year, but due to everything, it got pushed back till next fiscal year.
All right, can you just bring up one point? Budgets go down to zero amount at when everything's paid out, all the bills. Okay, so a pushover in any department cannot happen. I have no problem going forward with this, because it's already, it's late for bidding process. But keep in mind, the push, you don't push just because you didn't spend on this year's budget. You can't push it through two thousand and sixteen, or maybe you expect you're gonna get it.
That's why they're saying they're re-budgeting.
I understand it, but we would have to prove it for May one to re-budget. But since it was a late letting, I have no problem with this. But I just don't want them to get the direction that they're gonna re-budget everything that they spent for this year. That's all I'm saying.
It wasn't, it wasn't the city's fault that this thing got re-budgeted.
I totally understand it, because it was the weather. But I'm hoping that we aren't, because we didn't move forward on a project that would push it through again. It will be re-budgeted, because it was delayed due to weather.
So what's your concern?
My concern is pushing the other projects through on a re-budget if we didn't spend it for this year. Because that might've been our fault that we didn't go off and bid sooner.
All right. Page twenty-three. Any other questions on that? Okay, twenty-three.
So, this is the Infosafety Improvement Project, Wooddale and Irving Park Road. Discussed it a number of times. They're saying that it is going to, to go to bid soon, constructed this summer hopefully. And so, you know, you notice at the bottom of the page, the very last line says grant down there. That's an acknowledgement of the various grants, the safety loop grant, a couple of other grants that the city has to cover, to cover this project or the preponderance of the project for us. So like I said, I mean, I think we're all aware of this project, just because we have to do some different things with auditing and single audits, since it's federal money, we do need to include it in the budget for tracking purposes.
Okay. Make the minute take a roll. Mike, page, I mean, page twenty-four.
Page twenty-four is the additional landscaping monies put in for that area, specifically the community park area. This was part of the Euler Study to beautify and begin to formulate a nicer community park at Commercial and Wooddale. So these would be predominantly, was it just north of the tracks, west of Irving Park?
Do we, do we push that, do we push that back? Because that won't be done by this two thousand and sixteen, well.
Go ahead.
Another component of this hundred thousand is HR Green lumped in, a lot of the aesthetic improvements, like the cobblestone highlighted crosswalks within the actual Irving, Wooddale epicenter of the project.
Also that's.
With the medians, a lot of that's in here, in the project. So that'll coincide, so it won't be pushed back. So this number is actually a little in flux, some would be after, like you're saying. Some may be during, and actually, this number may be a little low, and may be higher, actually. So, but it's, it's in flux as the project gets closer.
All right, Alman Roy Wesley?
Same question, basically, with the landscaping. I went through this book too. This is the only page I basically found for landscaping. Where is the sewer treatment plant landscaping?
To the ground track.
No. To do the, you know, because of Veterans Park, since we put the building up, you can't see Veterans Park anymore. You just see a sign and.
Murmurs?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's a project we can add in here. We're waiting for the treatment plant to be done, and we had talked about maybe doing another rain garden in there, and assessing the situation when it's done, maybe doing a nice fence, I think Alderman Wesley brought that up.
But we have the design for the sewer treatment plant already. When's it gonna be done? Another year? This year? When?
I think the current estimate is in, was it late June still?
Of this year?
Yes, yes.
At least we could put it in here now and go out for design for the landscaping there, and possibly get some of it in this year even. And I don't wanna take it out of the sewer treatment plant.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly, I think, a sheet we can add, get some estimates and put it in, yeah. I mean, we've talked about it before.
But I thought, I mean, if I'm wrong, I thought we were going to have Streetscape instead of sending someone out to the design, that we were going to let them try design, redesign Veterans Park. Am I right, Mr. Woods? We talked about that.
Mr. Woods?
We still need money in the budget to accomplish the project.
I, I understand.
We talked about the medallions, so Streetscape, we'll discuss what we wanna do, but I don't think we're allowed to physically engineer it.
I don't think any engineer.
Picked up the degree over the weekend.
I'll defer to Streetscape Chairman Alderman Woods on this, but I know that the Streetscape does have a line item in their budget. I don't know if this is something we wanna take from that line item, the design potentially, or if we wanna incorporate a page into here.
Well, let's put, let's try to put another line, let's put another page in there.
Incorporate something, as we go through budget and everything, we can fine tune this a little more. We're not gonna solve it right now.
Right.
Mayor, please?
Right, besides the landscaping, I mean, we've got that retention pond over there that looks pretty lousy, right by the veterans. And that's where we talked about possibly a rain garden, something to beautify that area. Talked about the military medallions, or emblems, I should say, with the lighting. And possibly a Wooddale sign on the front of the wall.
Correct, we just don't wanna wait three years to implement.
I'm just.
Alman Roy Wesley?
I just don't wanna wait for tomorrow what we could do today. So, and there's no reason that we can't go out for looking at this now, or whatever, put it in there now, so we could get something in, get some flower prices for the bushes and trees or whatever we're gonna put in there, and get our discount prices there.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Just to clarify, did we wanna add a page, or we just wanna try to work, work through the Streetscape budget during the budget process?
I'd rather, I'd rather add a page, because Mr. Woods would give me more treason, like partly.
I concur.
Okay, so we adding a page?
Yeah.
Is there an estimated number that you'd like to see dedicated to that?
You go back and figure it out.
The.
Go ahead.
Are you asking for a number for planting, or just design? Or are we gonna let?
Both.
Sixty-five thousand.
Okay.
Alman Woods?
That's for design and because it's gonna cost you probably.
I think that number needs to be more like a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Really?
If you're gonna add lights
Oh, lights, okay, I'm sorry.
and the red wall, there's no way that that's getting done for sixty-five.
I.
I wasn't looking at.
Okay.
I mean, if we're gonna do it and design it, I mean, we gotta go through.
Well, you know, you know what CIP looks like? You know what we gotta come up with, but fine. You guys are expert in bringing to us, but but let's, let's get, but you guys going to be able to find where the money is coming from and that. Let them just give us.
I have all the faith.
All right.
Yeah, so is it a hundred and twenty-five then, the consensus?
Frank?
Is this the hundred and twenty-five just for the engineering of?
No.
Or the whole project?
The whole project.
For Veterans Park we're talking about?
Right.
Lights, emblems.
Emblem, okay.
Everything.
Landscaping, everything.
Frank?
But how are we coming up with that number? I'm not sure. Is that something we just pull out of a hat, or in? Art, where's that number coming from?
Well, I don't wear a hat.
Well, then where'd you pull it from? All I'm asking.
I will, I will tell you, wait a minute, I will tell you where that number came from.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Because you know what some of our landscaping projects have cost us. Okay?
Yeah.
And, and unfortunate that someone on this board is a landscaper, and he knows what ballpark prices are on that. And Art brought it up, because Art's a builder, and he knows ballpark figure where it's gonna go. So I'm going to go with their recommendation, if they recommend that, that don't mean we have to approve that. Just throw a number out there.
Doesn't mean it's gonna be.
Doesn't mean it's gonna be, it could be less. Okay, Frank?
Yeah, I mean, I.
I'll, I'll answer the question. I mean, it is because we have had discussions
Okay.
at Streetscape about it, and looking at some of the lighting projects, and I
The.
looked into the medallions. I've had conversations, so when we came up with a number of sixty-five, I know that that's inadequate, you know, when you look at what you're gonna do over there. Do I know exactly it's a hundred and twenty-five when you compare it to Raiden Garden numbers and some of the other things? That seems to be a fairly close number to what it's gonna cost us to get that.
All right, well, thanks. That's kind of the answer I was looking for.
Mayor, please?
Yeah, when we did the lighting over at the Sculpture Garden, it was about thirty-five thousand, I think, just for those few lights. And if we're gonna light the emblems, I mean, if you're gonna put emblems on the wall, number one, you have to make sure when you put the landscaping up, you don't cover them. So, and then you're gonna have to light them up. And if you put our emblem on the front wall and light it up, you got thirty, over thirty-five thousand, just, just in lighting and emblems, I'm sure, and then landscaping. and then landscaping.
Mr. Jacob?
I just want a clarification. Alderman Wesley keeps saying the treatment plant. We're only talking about the memorial, landscaping around the memorial there.
Right.
Okay. I just want a clarification. Thank you.
Redoing Veterans Park. I'll turn, I will turn the meeting back to the chairman. Go ahead.
You did the Edgewood, Edgewood Avenue sidewalk installation?
Correct. This project, for the past number of years, had been in, uh, the unfunded section. Don't want to get too far into the history of it, but, uh, through the, through the cash flow modeling this year, as well as the, uh, the impending installation of the Hemlock sidewalk, staff found it, uh, to work to get this project in. There was a question, we're gonna add it to the narrative for the final version. This is both sides of Edgewood between Irving and, and Elmhurst. So, I guess it's been sitting in unfunded for a number of years and, uh, finally made its way up into the funded section.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Are, are we going to try bid these two separate bids, two separate contracts?
Yeah, my understanding is Edgewood and Hemlock will go as one bid for sidewalk work.
Okay, so we're doing the both in one year?
Yeah.
Because you get better, you don't have to pay for mobilization, right? Okay, thank you.
Should we, is everything taken care of at Central Park?
Yeah.
Can we secure all the land and...
With the IGA with, or with...
Easement for the sidewalk?
Park District. We're still in negotiations with the Park District to make sure that it's gonna work. So, nothing is finalized finalized yet, but we're working towards, uh, probably a March-April, um, bid for this one so we can start construction first to May.
Thank you. You already got, you, uh, you got the Hemlock one you just covered. You want to go over there again or... Go ahead.
I think that Hemlock one.
It goes hand in hand, but you...
But it's gonna be, it's gonna be up, higher up.
Peter?
Question from the man. Uh, we have two hundred thousand for Edgewood and eighty-five thousand for Hemlock, and the construction supervision is only seven thousand for Hemlock, and it's four times the amount for... It's thirty thousand for, um, Edgewood alone.
So, it goes from Elmhurst all the way to...
Yeah, the Hemlock project itself is just from, um, Elmhurst, no, from Stonem to, uh, Elmhurst. And the other one's like a three, three, three whole blocks. So, it's, the Stonem projects is, is quite, or, um, the other project, Edgewood project is quite a, quite a bit bigger project.
They're going hand in hand.
And, and these projects are gonna be wrapped together as a whole, so it's gonna be, you know, thirty-seven thousand for construction maintenance. It's gonna be one project. It's just gonna be separated out in, in here.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, along Alderman Jacob's opinion there, eighty-five thousand for one, two hundred for the other. So, if one is seven thousand, if we did the math, the other one should only be about, uh, twenty thousand if we do it, you know, percentage-wise. It's like the percentages are different. I, I think that's what you're trying to say, right? Instead of thirty thousand, that one's a little, the other one's a little high. Just, I think that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to Mr. York, but I believe these were gleaned from the, uh, the initial engineer's estimates on these projects. You know, I know there was some, I think, some issues with the Hemlock one with trees and sidewalks, whatever, and then the Edgewood one is two sides and three blocks. I, not, not specifically disagreeing with you, but, you know, we did get these numbers from, from the engineers, so we're trying to be as accurate as we can.
Well, that's the one where we had illustrations with the trees going around and we're taking them out and not too close to the street. Eugene?
Two, two questions. Edgewood sidewalk, it's gonna be, there's a lot more, uh, moving parts on that, more trees, more sewer work or inlets have to be moved over. So, I think that's what brought that cost up. I believe the Hemlock cost is too low for construction. So, we might want to up that. Think I got a hundred and... Think it was about a hundred and twenty-five. It could be, no, a hundred and two, I think. It's gonna, may go up another ten thousand. I'll tell you. So, because when they went out there, they might have to move some inlets when we were out there, so.
Peter?
Uh, do you know how much the Park District, I, I know we said here that they agreed to share in some of the cost. Do we have, do they see as far as a percentage, what percentage they're gonna contribute?
Mike?
Go ahead.
Yeah, we had, staff had reached out to their director, and I think he actually stated that they had allocated some money. It's just we haven't formalized it officially yet, but I think it was about ten, ten grand.
I thought it was five.
I thought it was ten.
Well, you also gotta move the sewer to the grid, so.
So, let's say seventy-five hundred.
I, I just remember you saying, I thought you said five. Could be ten.
Five to ten.
Anything else? No. Your next project, Elgin O'Hare.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this project sheet from last year, uh, the numbers have changed fairly significantly. So, when we prepared it last year, we weren't sure, uh, what the amount of the right-of-way purchases and the project credits we were gonna receive from the tollway. So, now having those numbers in hand, uh, we've been able to get a better, better grip on what our, uh, potential outlay and the out-years is, is going to be. And then also, the engineering, as the project gets nearer to completion, uh, the engineering demands, uh, plan reviews, et cetera, from the consulting firm should go down as well, which is why you'll see those, uh, design outreach, uh, numbers tapering off. Uh, and then the numbers that were in the construction, like you said, are estimated to be, are planned to be covered by the project offsets that we receive through the land act and the, like, the water main crosses and things of that nature.
Good question.
So, so these are, what can you say, moving numbers because they could come lower than, depends what we get from the state and the highway.
Go ahead, Mr. Mervis.
Yeah. I think if anything, these numbers might even still be high, to be honest, so, safe guess.
Listen what they are.
Jeff, do we, uh, do we know what that number is from the tollway, the credits? Do we have a solid number on that yet?
Go ahead, Mr. Mervis. Go ahead, Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, one point five to one point eight, something like that. I mean, it was significant dollars, which you'll notice in last year's CIP, we chopped out almost all of what we had budget because we got that number now.
All right, thanks, Jeff.
Brad? The funds from here. Could this come out of the TIF area? The funds from that? Tough question.
Oh, President Elgin O'Hare.
Yeah, um...
It is.
Two, two, two things. One, um, just to, to be perfectly frank with you, um, we'd have to check. My presupposition, well, two things. One, um, the, the district hasn't been established yet, so we first have to make sure it gets established. Um, and second of all, um, I mean, we can check, however, I would tend to think not, but that doesn't mean we can't ask the question and, and see if we can, see if we can do it.
So, my question is... To ask the question then is a why, because Elgin O'Hare is for improvement of the area with the TIF area. So, that's why, that's my purpose, is why can't we use the TIF money? If we're gonna go TIF and we're gonna do that, I'd rather not take it out of general fund if possible, take it out of TIF if this could. And it's for improving an area.
Sure, and just, you know, if, if that were to be eligible, um, fiscal sixteen for sure, that there would, is the way the, the TIF is set up on the property, that there'd be no money that year. Seventeen would, would be questionable even if we could. So, maybe the only year that there'd be any increment to actually apply to it might be eighteen if we could.
You'd have to look into that because it's the money we get working hand in hand with the state, so, with the hot toll road. This is all from the toll road.
So, I mean, we can, we can, we'll, we can ask the question, sure.
They're still in the area.
Tie those in, though.
But it's all, it's all in the area.
You'll check out.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask the question.
Anyone else? Jeff, did you have something?
No.
Next, you have the, uh, Ash Street Safety Improvements.
Correct, yeah. And this project, um, as well, the sheet changed a little bit. Last year, you may recall, we had, was it five hundred, five hundred ninety thousand dollars in there for this project. Um, the, the agreement that the council passed a couple of meetings ago actually took us out of the, of that part of it. It's now just gonna be an agreement, uh, between IDOT and Metro, uh, just between the two of them. So, this money, uh, represents, um, some, uh, designing construction of, was it the, I think there was a median, a couple of other, uh, safety measures that weren't covered by the grant. And then in the out-year seventeen, Design Services at Robinson to prepare the quiet zone documents and work their way through that process.
Questions? Mr. Wesley?
Aren't we supposed to have that done by end of twenty sixteen? Are we falling behind on this or for some reason? Okay, maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Mervis?
It, it can't even be applied to be a quiet zone until after the safety improvements, and we all know about the delays with the safety improvements.
So, you got two? What else here? That's it for that.
For the transit, yeah, correct. Unless there's, uh, any other questions, we're now done with the transportation section. Move on to the non-transportation section, uh, which I mentioned is, uh, a marriage between the building and grounds section and the miscellaneous section from previous CIPs. Um, just the way it was laying out, it, it seemed to make more sense from a presentation standpoint to just combine them into one, uh, non-transportation category. As you can see, there's the listing of the projects, um, for this year, and you'll notice that the majority of it is in fiscal sixteen. And then in the out-years, uh, streetlight installation is the only, the only constant really going forward. Uh, the next page, again, is the, the summary of projects by year. And, uh, as we do with the transportation section, unless there's any specific objections to this page, Mr. Chairman, we'll just move into the, uh, the project pages. Hard copy number thirty-two. Should be the City Hall Aesthetic Improvement Program, which is a new, uh, new sheet this year, uh, in the CIP, uh, looking to beautify, you know, the grounds and the appearance of City Hall.
Mr. Wesley?
I guess, I guess the question would be...
Sorry, there's still any, I can't see your hand.
Use before our...
My question, is that this, um... Is that this, the front of the building, the streets, is it just the landscaping? I mean, this is...
Mr. Mervis?
Yeah, we've got, um, a, a number of aldermen have, have kinda complained about the design. I mean, you have empty hills of grass out there in the parking lot. It's more for a firm to come in, maybe give us a new, um, way to spruce up we are, what we already have, and maybe add a little more to dress it up. It's looking kind of barren out there lately. And just some ways to improve what we have and add some new things to spruce it up.
So... So, you're estimating a hundred and fifty thousand to do that?
It's an estimate.
All right, but my question is, and, and I have no problem in that, but there's one item that's, that's been in this budget that has been pushed off and pushed off and pushed off. And it's this, this wall. This window. I'll tell you one go, you go here and you feel a cold wrath next to these windows, and we have kicked this one down the road constantly for this face. Yeah. These windows up right out here, so, I mean...
How much was that?
I'm not...
Three, three fifty.
I, I'm not sold on this one, but I'm not, I'm not the person, but I'd rather try to fix a building before we do that, so.
Mervis?
Yeah, I mean, we would, we would tend to agree. Obviously, we've had this in there many a times, the windows you're talking about, and it was never the flavor of the month. It was always the first item to be taken out. So, that's why this item was talked about recently, so that's why we put that in and left the windows out. But you're right, it's been, the windows have been in there for four CIPs probably.
Mayor?
Uh, Roy was first, actually.
Oh, thank you.
He was first. Armrest.
Armrest, okay. I would agree with Alderman Wesley, which I usually don't do, like, write down that date and time. You're talking about the hills in the parking lot. It's not that hard for Public Works to come in with a skid steer and knock down those hills and put a tree or whatever, since we're dealing with salt on the hills and something like that. Did we ever do a cost analysis of how much we're wasting on those windows of the heat going out and gas? Or do we not pay for gas because we're a city? I don't know.
Mr. Mervis?
Again, I'm excited that the council has decided that the windows are important, and we would love to swap out this for the windows. Again, it's been in there for quite some time.
Could I make that an emotion then?
We love the windows.
And the windows?
Uh, let's see if they're, maybe Elgin O'Hare can do something with it. Mayor?
Before we put the windows in, I mean, we've been discussing, we might need more staff when Thorndale starts going through and whatnot. And I know the office is a little tight, and I'm talking with a couple of the aldermen, we said, well, if we have to, we could always push that wall out, then there would be a new wall anyways. If you're gonna spend three hundred and fifty thousand, then you're gonna rip the wall out and push that building out to add some extra office spaces in this building. Because I don't think anybody up here is ready to build a brand-new City Hall, which would cost millions. It's just something that came up in discussion. If we, if we, I mean, I don't know, I mean, we should look at that before we spend the three fifty. I, I would like to get those windows done because, right, they need to be done. But if in five years, you're gonna need to put a, put the new wall out, you just waste the three fifty. Well, it, it's, it's been said a couple of times, oh, they're a little tight down here and the fine, you know, I don't know.
I, I guess I was gonna agree with the Wesleys here. Um, I mean, three hundred and sixty thousand, I mean, this has been pushed back and pushed back, and this is not only wasting energy, but I, I guess there's potential of mold. I mean, there's, I mean, you, it says it's, water's getting in and there's damage. Um, this is the first I've heard about the window, the wall being blown out to make the City Hall bigger, but, I mean, I think this needs to get done.
In a few years, not, nothing that has to be done right now.
Okay. We could do a little of both. Hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for the windows. Let's take fifty thousand dollars out of tourism fund and do some landscaping.
How did you reduce the price, Mr. O'Hare?
I didn't reduce the price. I just added, I just... Well, we'd do, we could do half and half. Can't we do half this year and half next year? Or do we gotta do it all?
I don't think of the custom made. You can do it that way.
Well, then we gotta find another hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, uh, I know we're not in the TIF over here. Yeah.
Yeah, um, we can cer, we can certainly go back, but the way the, the cash flows worked, uh, we're working out, um, if the council so desired to move those up into the funded... so desired to move those up into the funded realm and then either put this into unfunded or put some other amount, um, somewhere else in, in the, the operating budget to, you know, take the skid steer and knock down the hills and plant a tree. Uh, we can certainly incorporate that in, and then, um, it would appear that the cash flows would support, um, moving those windows up into a funded project this year, if that were the direction.
The sixteen you're talking about, moving them up to sixteen?
Thought that was the way the conversation was going, yeah.
I'm just confirming.
So, do we need a motion to take this out of here and put it towards the, to the windows then? For a direction?
Yes.
Direction or vote, I don't, I don't know.
You can do it by direction because then they're, they're going to put it in the budget.
But I still need to find a hundred and fifty thousand more. What do you mean, it's three hundred thousand, how much is it? The windows. It's three sixty for the windows? Okay. We'll find it.
So, just so we're all on the same page, the windows, obviously, in this coming CIP, we want to get it done.
I, I didn't, I'm only speaking on behalf of me.
Well.
But there's other people.
I'm assuming everybody seems excited about the windows. And then the landscaping, are we doing that this year as well, just taking some out of a different fund, or we're not doing landscaping?
We're not going, I'd rather not do nothing yet until we see where we stand, we might have money left over from the, uh, Veterans Park, who knows? After, let's see where that comes in at, after that, because we just put money towards that.
So we'll just, we won't plug this into a fiscal year, we'll just move it to unfunded and then reevaluate next, next year, you're saying?
We need to find some more money for windows.
So we're going to move it to unfunded and then reevaluate, okay.
Then, I never got my answer, did we do a cost analysis on the ye- how much we wasted?
I'm, I'm unaware of one that we've done.
Okay.
Um, but your, uh, your follow-up statement to that, though, is, uh, by and large, correct about the municipal building. And it's built.
Oh, do we, it gets built?
Uh, we, we have a certain number of terms, uh, that we get, get built from, uh, we get for free from Nyquil region, so.
Exempt, okay.
Yep.
Your.
I, I know this window project has been talked about forever, that three sixty, was that the, was that a firm quote at one time, or where did that number come from? Did we get an estimate from a contractor, or how do we get that number?
Yeah, we had the contractor come in specifically, since it is a custom job, and the number's been escalated over the years, so it was for the exact custom window. Uh, that was, the original guy came out probably four years ago, but we've been upping the cost to account for.
Mayor?
Um, I know Mr. Forrest had, was heading this project up, is there other ways of building that wall instead of just the way it is right now? Instead of this custom thing, something that could save us money, have we looked at other alternatives?
Mr. Murvis?
I vaguely remember that conversation, and I think because of structurally how it was, that that was the way you had to do it. Could be wrong, I'll ask him again, but it's a little bit of a funky setup out there, and I don't think you could have done it, but I'll ask him.
Frank?
I don't know who can answer this, but, uh, can you, uh, can you give me a breakdown on exactly what windows we're talking about here?
It was in the hallway.
The whole hallway?
The whole.
How many windows is that?
It was like thirty-six.
Yeah, you, you have both the first floor, the second floor of this hallway, then you have the, the stairwell area, and then you also have over on the other side by the stairway up to the clerks and admin office by the vending machines.
So it sounds like almost every window in the place.
It kind of wraps.
Yeah.
Aside from the windows that face Wooddale Road, um, that are in our specific offices.
Four and six windows. Okay. Thank you.
It's, it's a pretty substantial.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Another, with the O'Hare, O'Hare noise, can't we, uh, we still have that board, don't we? The sound insulation? I know they won't do a city, but maybe help us with some of the cost on it too? I don't know who's, who's on that board from the city.
Peter and Frank.
Dean, or Dean's on the insulate, sound insulation board.
Would it come under that?
Yeah, we'd go under sound insulation.
Okay, I'll ask.
It's worth asking.
Yeah.
I mean, the windows are shaking now.
Any questions, any other questions? Move on to gun range computer upgrades?
Thirty-sixty-three thousand. No, 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 no.
Sure, um, yeah, as you may. Yeah, as you may recall, a couple of fiscal years ago, they did, uh, some upgrades to the, to the structure itself. Um, and at that time, uh, due to some cash flow constraints, uh, pushed off the disc computer, the computer upgrade portion of it. Um, and so now it's, it's come back around, um, I can't speak for the equipment itself, but I know it's, uh, rather aged at this point, and, uh, it's, uh, time to replace it as part of the original project to complete the, uh, the gun range.
Do you have the master guns?
I'm not calling them.
He's like, hold on a second.
Mr. Woods?
How, how aged is the system?
I'd prefer to defer to the chief on that one.
Were they upgraded the range, but they didn't upgrade the computer system?
Thanks, um, we're at the point with this system that if we have a power flicker here and you lose power to it, for every single shooting program we have in there, you have to go in and redo about a hundred commands, it's like having a, before even the electric typewriter, is, is kind of where we're at with it, and we have to hit position.
Four, five, yeah, it's.
Any other questions? Move out of the removal of, removal and reforestation, or for, refer, right, you know? Ash trees, reforestation of ash trees.
Is, is that reading this, we're going to replace every ash tree we took down in one year?
Four hundred.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're going to spend a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for ash trees?
I will, uh, defer to Mr. York to answer that question.
The goal of this program is to replace all trees into their locations next year. Uh, due to the severity of the destruction of our urban forest, we'd like to get it replanted as quickly as possible.
So that's what it's going to cost for four hundred trees, a hundred and ninety-five dollars?
We're hoping that's high, but that's kind of where we're thinking.
Matt, are those more mature trees or are those young trees?
Um, shooting for between two and three inches in diameter.
What is our tree price now? For two inch?
Um, I think planted is somewhere around, I would say somewhere around three hundred to four hundred, I'm not exactly sure. That's a, that's about, um, I think that it makes out to about seven hundred dollars a tree, so that's, that's probably a little bit high, but we.
Did you say seven hundred per tree?
Yes, I mean, if you do the math just based tree, um, we also are including in the purchase of this, or in this, um, watering being done by an outside contractor, um, since we are going to plant some of the trees in the springtime, uh, we're going to, uh, contract out, um, watering services, um, as part of the contract as well, so we, because we don't have the internal staff to make sure the trees get watered.
You don't have the internal staff? I find that hard to believe. When I, when I see sometimes they're not hiding some, they're hiding somewhere, but it's not the place to go, why can't we get gator bags?
Well, we can get gator bags, but those gator bags have to be filled in order for them to work. So, and the gator bag needs to be filled at least once a week. If we can trust the homeowner to fill that gator bag once a week, then we don't need to fill it. But in my, uh, work of doing this for the last six years, um, with gator bags, gator bags get placed on there, and they don't get filled unless the city comes around and fills them.
I see other cities doing it, it seems like they work very well, and Addison they do it.
Mr. Murvis?
Just some food for thought, I think originally when we started talking about this, Mr. York had actually broken it into two years, and the cost was cheaper, and we were doing some of the watering in-house, but because of a discussion we had three or four months ago, we were mandated to make sure that we get it all done in one year, if I remember correctly, which is why it's higher of a price.
Mr. Woods?
Yeah, we all sat up and agreed to push this forward and, and move it up, the math comes out to four eighty-seven fifty a tree. I'm sure that Matt will do his best to save us some money, but doesn't make any sense to plant a tree if nobody's going to water it, and it, it dies.
Anything else? Thanks, man. We have, uh, admin, administration, IT strategic plan?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's really two main, uh, components to this sheet this year. Uh, the first is the, was it, let's see, I think the AVL, uh, which is the, uh, the fleet tracking, uh, they had a presentation on, uh, was it a month to six weeks ago? And then the other, uh, is an upgrade to the, uh, cameras and audio capabilities, uh, within the police department. Uh, some of their cameras and, uh, audio equipment and lockup, I think the narrative goes through it fairly well with what the, the current efficiencies are and some of the changing laws that, uh, we have to try and comply with, uh, going forward over in the police department.
Any question? Mr. Wesley?
On the site, is that outfitting all the public works vehicles? Every single vehicle that we own?
Uh, for the public works, correct.
For seventy thousand?
No, it's, part of it is that, and then part of it's the, uh, the cameras and the audio capabilities of the police department. There's two projects within that seventy thousand dollars.
You want to say something?
We, we, we'll get you a breakdown if, if you'd like, but, uh, Mr. York?
Yeah, the public works portion is about twenty thousand, twenty to twenty-two thousand, the remainder of it is, is the, uh, cameras from the police department. That's what, that's what was told during the presentation that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Peter?
For the cameras at the police station, is that going to be done internally with our IT director, or is that, uh, outsourcing it to a contractor?
Nick? Superman?
A little bit of both, um, we'll use a vendor to do some of the point-to-point wireless connections, but the rest of it'll be done in-house.
How much do you have left to do on the IT side? What's left in the, to do with the IT?
What's left to do on the IT side?
Upgrades.
Um, the server was just recently done, um, most of the outside cameras are pretty sufficient, we may look into replacing some of those, but a lot of the internal cameras are of really poor quality, and it's hard to make out some of the images, they're starting to fail slowly. So that's, that's most of what we'd be doing inside, is replacing a lot of the actual cameras themselves, and, um, then I'd also be managing some of the wireless point-to-point stuff, but we'll need a vendor to come out to climb the pole and install some of the new point-to-point equipment.
Anything else? Thanks. What's the streetlight installations?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, previous, uh, budgets had included twenty-five thousand per year for streetlight installations. Uh, we found that based upon kind of the, the current pricing environment, uh, it was prudent to, to make sure that we had a little, enough room to, to install, the, the requests that come through to bump that in future years up to thirty thousand. Uh, as in the narrative, the fifty thousand in fiscal sixteen, uh, you know, during conversations we had, the last time we installed some lights, uh, staff felt there may be some more lights, uh, coming forward in the near term, and staff has, uh, these streetlights that came down from the old O'Hare on hand, so, uh, theoretically, if, if the electric were available, it'd be a little quicker installation since we already have some poles. And with the, uh, the perception that there may be more requests coming, uh, perhaps a look at a couple of previous projects for additional lights, et cetera. Um, one of the, put a little more money into the current, uh, the fiscal sixteen budget, uh, to accommodate those, and like I said, then raise it to thirty thousand, uh, in the future years, uh, to accommodate installations.
I mean, uh, how many lights can we get for thirty thousand, for instance?
Yeah, I mean, it really depends on what the nature of the work is, um, and, you know, I, I don't know all the numbers, but, you know, if the power box is from me to you, that's a lot cheaper than having to directional bore from, you know, here to Shorty's, for example, so it really all depends on, on what the setup is, if it's an aerial install, if it's underground installs, there's a lot of, a lot of variables, um, into that. That being said, um, I think, uh, now we get about, about a four, four or five, to thirty thousand?
She's about five to seven thousand.
Okay, yeah, so, about, she said a five thousand piece, depending on the setup, so five, five to six, depending on the, the setup.
Good, thanks.
Eugene?
Well, now that we do this new procedure for, uh, lights now, that the staff is going to decide and walk the whole area, the whole block and say that someone comes in for three streetlights, they may come back and say they need five streetlights. So I think that's the reason why they put the higher number in, because we just had an incident that there was only two there, and staff come back, and Greg came back, and staff came back and says we need to add four, so I kind of agree with that number pretty much. The staff's going to give a recommendation, they might need six on that block, I don't know, so.
Is there a side improvement program? Any question?
Sure, Mr. Chairman.
How come we didn't fund it at all for two thousand?
Sure, um, the current project, um, is anticipated, I think it's directly to be, to be done, uh, by April thirtieth, is the expectation. Uh, the project that's in fiscal seventeen, uh, is kind of the reworking of the front street parking lot, uh, over there, but that can't be completed until the, till the intersection improvements are done. Yeah, um, just going forward, I know the, uh, the committee of the council has set forth some, some guidelines for application to the program and then some, uh, thresholds or whatever, um, you know, I'm not aware specifically of, of any, uh, project that's in the hopper right now, um, but just for, for planning purposes, I mean, is there, do we want to add some dollars there going forward, just so they're allocated to this project? And if so, what, what would, what number would you, would you want included in there? For, for facade, correct, yeah. No, we're talking in the future years, they're, they're currently blank, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. We think there's other projects coming.
Murvis?
Yeah, and also for, for sixteen, I mean, we, since we do have that policy out there now that we just approved, we have had, I think, a couple people email Ms. Henigan in the building department asking for applications and whatnot, so we may want to set aside some funding for some smaller scale things or, or whatnot this, this coming year, we're looking for a number if you guys want to do that.
How much?
How big are projects?
I wouldn't base it on a specific project, I mean, I'd. I mean, I think just a, a funding amount, just put, plug in and... I mean, well, that was a massive project, though. So...
Put half of it. Yeah, just don't do half. Put half in two thousand sixteen.
I would just throw the two fifty in there for the next three years. Like you said, we don't know what's coming down, we don't have to use the money, we don't know what it is, but that seems like that.
He's talking about two thousand sixteen for money.
Don't know.
Right.
You want two fifty?
I would, I would put it in. I mean, we developed the program for it to last more than one year, so I, I would put a number in there for the five years. And since you got two fifty, I would just copy and paste over.
For all four years?
Both ways, right, yes. And then, I mean, we're gonna address it project by project anyway, so...
No, I'm gonna add to it.
Oh, okay.
Wesley?
By just adding another two hundred and fifty across the board here, I think we should, uh, the building department should actually look at Irving Park Road. That area, especially where the construction's gonna be next year, about the reef, about this project, and trying to hit them hard over there. Shorty's, the tire store, Christie's, that corner. So, just some ideas to the building department, especially, not just say we have the program, I mean, try to encourage them to do it, if you can, all in all, too.
Frank lowered, didn't we, didn't we lower that?
Lower what?
The side, Roger. Go ahead, Peter.
Along the lines of what Alderman R. Wesley just said, uh, have we, has community development reached out to the businesses on Irving, letting them know we have this program? I mean, do they, are they aware of it, or?
Well, Frank made it quite clear in one meeting, too.
Alderman Wood said he notified everybody.
Not, not everybody.
No, but we'll, we'll have a proactive outreach to get that going. I know it's advertised on the website and whatnot, but we'll have a proactive approach.
Didn't Frank also lower the, in the one meeting, lowered the standards for that?
Lowered the threshold, right?
Lowered the threshold, so have we gotten, have we gotten the, gotten that out to them also, to let them know? Like you were saying, paint and facade and fix up?
Yeah, I think that would be in the communication piece.
Right. Mayor?
Brad, when you said communication piece, I, I was under the understanding we were gonna let from one end to the other end was a discussion on Irving Park. No. Now you said communication piece. First, we said we didn't contact them, then we communicate, did we send it out, or?
Well, the manager said we'd have a more proactive approach. I meant, it would be in that kind of, when we were proactive, that would be mentioned during the proactiveness.
We, right, we should send it out.
Do you have a new one, uh, new, uh, new upgrade in financial software? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I jumped that. Clock tower. Tried to skip it.
Try to sc...
No. Anyone questions?
Oh, yeah.
Go ahead.
Hearing none, moving on.
No, no, no.
Hearing none, yeah, carry on.
Twenty-one thousand dollars for design.
Is that a question?
It is a question, because the question is, we're taking this out of general fund, utility tax. You're gonna sit there and tell me we're gonna take it out of our one percent home rule tax, I'm sure, which is okay. Um, I still have a problem putting this out of the general fund and not coming out of hotel tax. And the utility tax is for infrastructure. My definition of an infrastructure is roads, streets, lights. So, if this council will go ahead with this clock tower, the definition of an infrastructure is a clock tower, because it's, the utility tax was put in as a referendum question on a ballot for infrastructure. So, if this city is sitting there saying that a clock tower is infrastructure, then so be it. But I think we should find a different fund to take this from, not the utility tax. I don't think it should come out of that. Otherwise, we're saying, "We have too much in the utility tax, let's give some of it back to the residents."
Mr. Murmurs?
Um, I'll caution everybody not to take this to the bank, per se, but I've been working on a potential funding source, um, with one of our engineering firms, and it's a very strong possibility, um, that we're going to get probably, uh, was it, eighty?
Eighty.
Eighty, yeah, eighty percent of that number funded via free money. Eighty percent of the, well, we're, we actually have four, we're working on getting four hundred and ninety thousand dollars free and clear, and then we pay, what's the number?
Twenty percent, say one thirty.
One thirty. Which we're pretty close to finalizing. It looks like it's for sure. We should know in the next couple of weeks.
Did anybody notice that up here about?
I just found out this week.
Okay, okay.
Been working on it for a while, but it, nothing was, there was nothing until this week, so...
Okay. Then I don't have anything else to add to it.
So, in respect to the clock tower, wherever the difference is, maybe we can sell that in blocks to other, uh, investors. So, maybe it won't even cost the city any money.
You can't do that, it's advertising.
No, not advertising a plaque. Sell blocks like a plaque, put it on the clock? Not advertising, like...
You're saying donation, right? Corporate donation, sponsorship, not advertising.
Yeah. Sponsorship, right.
Right.
Servus?
Again, also keep in mind, like Brad said, we're only committing to, to next year, and this is in the out year, so it's kind of an out-year project, so...
Correct.
New upgrade in financial software?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Over the past, I guess, year, but, uh, really within the last few months, uh, the finance department has been demoing, uh, some other software programs, um, and, you know, kinda investigating our, our current, uh, current software does have an upgrade available. Um, so we've, we've been taking a look at that, uh, we've looked at other softwares. There's a couple of other ones, uh, that we're going to look at probably early on in the fiscal year, um, that we haven't, one that we haven't seen in a few years, they have a new version out. And then there's also one that, uh, we haven't seen before. So, uh, we're looking to do, uh, you know, to get all of those through and then, uh, try and at that point, uh, work on a scope, uh, RFQ and get that out, um, get some pricing. And then it's, you know, depending on how aggressive we wanna be, you know, I mean, uh, there's, there's one town that I know of, it's, it took them a year and a half to migrate from their old software to the new software. Um, the fastest I've heard is, I think, about six months. Um, so, so we're probably, we'll start to finish looking at nine months to a year, probably, to, uh, to migrate over once we officially begin the, uh, the migration, the RFQ and bidding process. Which is why it's in fiscal seventeen, just the way the timing works out between the nine to twelve-month window.
Eugene?
The software for finance, I'd have to ask you, um, so, I, I really would like this moved up to two thousand sixteen if we could get it done, 'cause obviously we've been having problems with the software. And you can sit there and tell me we had it, but we talked, and we've been having problems with it. There's stuff on that software we can't do. So, I would ask that this, try to get it in two thousand sixteen the best you can. And a follow-up question, is the software that you designed, is it, does the finance or are we looking to update the building department's software that they work together? 'Cause we had talked about software in this city constantly, that the building department's software don't work here, finance don't work here. We have talked about this numerous years up here, that we need to get a software that the whole entire division, just off of Public Works, develop a software that would work on each department. 'Cause I guarantee you, next year, we'll be back up here again and we'll say, "We gotta spend three hundred thousand dollars for the building department's software, the year after that, we'll spend four hundred thousand dollars for Public Works software." Could we not, could we look at the software as a unit of the whole entire city to make sure they work together in the software?
Certainly.
Building department sends you stuff, okay? But no, it doesn't work because it can't activate to your system. You send stuff to the building department, and we had this conversation, and that don't work. Can we get a, you know, a, a system that is all together? So, if we mean that we have to spend, my opinion, if you have to go up to six hundred thousand, whatever, I don't know what software costs, but we need to get the software that works in the whole entire city, not piecemeal the software together.
Sure.
Okay? I'm just throwing that number out, guys, don't have a heart attack.
Yeah, one, one of the soft, just so you know, one of the softwares, uh, that we previewed, uh, within the past few months, actually came into us as a recommendation from the building department, that they got at one of their, uh, their networking, uh, events, so...
So, again, we are looking in, does not finance, we look in, all of it up, all at once, or?
I mean, that would be the goal. I mean, that's why when we do the demos, we have the building department come over and look at their section, uh, as well, so...
Okay.
It's ultimately the goal, yes.
I guess they were upset, they threw up six hundred thousand.
Burying the ComEd lines? Servus?
Yeah, as you know, this has kinda been on the radar, um, for a while. Originally, we had a cost way higher than this. Um, we had kinda focused in on the, um, intersection project, um, area to bury all the lines, as long as we're working within that area. As you know, we, we contracted with ComEd, where they wanted some money upfront to do the design work and whatnot. And, uh, I'm pretty sure that, that, that number's kinda finalized now. It's about one hundred and seventy, one hundred and eighty thousand, so this number's probably a little high. Um, and, I mean, that's what it is to get the lines buried in conjunction with the intersection project, including Commercial Street. There'll be no more wires on Commercial Street around the park at all. The, the only wire would come into play, um, I think the first wire would be around that house west of the pool, would be the first wire in the whole area.
Good job.
So, this number is the hundred and seventy thousand, is, we've had that in writing somewhere, or we have that number narrowed down?
Jeff?
Uh, I'll have to admit, ComEd's been very quirky this whole time with this project, and their correspondence isn't the greatest, but I'm looking to, to nail it down officially. But, yeah, the number's gonna be like one seventy or one eighty.
It's, and I know we've heard a million dollars, Alderman Lazar just told me, told me, "You heard two million at one time," so we're down to two hundred thousand now?
Million a mile.
Well, when we first started talking about that two million number, too, that was going beyond the scope of the actual intersection area as well, that could be part of that larger number. And also, we found out through the, the process that ComEd, in the way we're doing things with, working with H R Green, that a lot of the, the burying of the wires around Wooddale and Irving, we're just paying the difference of the new infrastructure cost, which they'd have to do anyway, which has made it significantly cheaper, that they only charge us the difference of the underground work. And then the commercial area, we're kinda footing the whole bill on that. And again, no wires in the, in the new park area at all.
I think you got the million dollars from the, when ComEd said it was like a million dollars for every mile to bury cable.
Yeah.
Eugene?
So, that doesn't tell you how, how many poles are gonna bury on Earth. I, I know commercial, but how many on, on Earth?
No, their, their engineering plan does tell you exactly what's going on, where all the switch boxes are gonna be, what poles are buried, and within the boundaries of the project, they have it mapped out in a design plan where everything's gonna be, where the switch boxes are gonna be, which poles are going away and whatnot. They, they have that all, so you'll see it. And H R Green's working that into the project letting.
Okay, so, one, one follow-up. So, why would we not air mark? Because my biggest goal now is if you start there, you might as well do all of Irving, so why aren't we air marking money on seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty?
Jeff?
I mean, you might price it out all the way down.
Eugene, get a raise.
I'm just saying, why?
He's on the pot of gold at the end of the rainbow.
Well, again, we, we know those costs are significantly burdensome on the budget itself, and the council had decided, hey, we're doing the downtown safety improvement area, let's focus in on the park and the intersection, and then maybe way down the road, 'cause it's so expensive, talk about other options outside the boundaries.
We sat here and we talked about you finding Irving Park Road. We talked about it. This council has sat here. So, why would you not air mark it? No one says we gotta do it, put it in there. No one says we gotta do it, let's see what the price is. You guys sat, sit up here, I sat up here, you find Irving Park Road. And the biggest discussion on this council has been, the poles look ugly on Irving Park Road. Is the decorate lights on Wooddale Road? Might as well look at doing that, too?
You know what, Jeff, I actually agree with him. That's another one, right? No, I mean, I'm all for, you know, burying all, all of these poles, um, but of course we wanna stay in budget. But also, I, I, I think you should be congratulating, this, this, that's quite a number difference. Good job on that. Thanks.
Mayor?
Wasn't really me, but...
Take credit.
Yeah, I agree. Everybody wanted to do the lines, but I, if we put them in the budget, if you, if you put in the money all the way across, let's say through two thousand twenty, I, I can tell that this staff is trying to be prudent and not have it taken out every year like the windows were, be, I mean, they were, they're being realistic. We can put them in there. I, you know, I think everybody here voted for it, to put, bury them.
Can that money that's in there?
But, you know, let's face it, we just put the windows in, we start doing this, we're gonna take the windows out again. We really have to make a decision, and I, I think they're just being conservative. We could always put it in next year.
Jeff, the money from the clock tower? If it's eighty percent funded? Can that money be used towards, spot the power lines?
Yeah, but as we said, that six hundred thousand was in an out year anyway, so, yeah, I mean, it could, but we can just do an unfunded sheet, so we track it, and then we'll go from there. So, we'll make sure that this sheet is added in there, as an unfunded for now, and then reconsider.
Do the, do agree? All right. Next, you have O'Hare Noise?
Uh, yeah, right now, Wooddale's a part of an organization called SOC, I'm sure you're all familiar, Suburban O'Hare Commission. Um, they had some monies allocated to them through, um, a law, uh, a legal settlement a number of years ago, um, and they're currently going to use the funding for initiatives surrounding O'Hare Noise and the problems with the, the new runway configurations and to combat that. Um, some of the ideas being thrown around, you know, hiring, uh, a lobbying firm, changing legislation for stringent, uh, stringent, uh, measurements of the noise, um, uh, Mayor, I don't know... Mayor, I don't know, you can speak to some of the other initiatives as well.
How about air quality, anything?
Right, everything's gonna be discussed as far as the noise, the operations at the airport, again, hiring the expert. Right now, SOC has about approximately two hundred thousand. At the last SOC meeting that was discussed, that, you know, I, I raised the question, I go, okay, well, if we run out of this money, then where do we get the money? Should we start budgeting? And the number of fifty thousand maybe per community, you might only need five thousand. You might not even need anything the first year. There was supposed to be a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. That's being pushed back, it just happened today, I had a call from Mayor Prine. Actually, we met last night, Mayor Prine Soto and myself, a couple of other mayors. They were gonna have, supposedly, we got the bios on one set of experts, but there's gonna be another set of experts, bios being sent out in the next week or two. So at least we'll have a choice. There was some discussion on, one guy wasn't giving enough, we're getting charged too much. Okay, you have somebody else. So Mayor Soto says he's gonna bring somebody else. So that meeting may be pushed back a week to two weeks. But we're trying to get it done in February so we can get started. Because this is, you know, let's face it, the windows are down right now, and maybe some of the calls have slowed down a little bit, but spring is coming in. And it's only gonna get worse with the next runway, so we wanna be on top of it and try and get ahead of it.
Eugene?
You said the SOC got a two hundred thousand dollars in their account?
In their account.
Who, who handled, who's handling that account?
Well, actually, the attorney for the group is our attorney, Patrick Bond. But Al Grove is the chairman right now, Mayor Craig Johnson.
Okay, could I, you know, I'm for this, one hundred percent.
You wanna copy the bills? I, I have a statement from the last meeting, maybe Jeff, you have it.
Here, here's the reason. We dropped, years ago, I, I'm the one that made the motion, drop out SOC. Because we were fighting with O'Hare and all that, and we were just throwing the money. And when I asked for the financial statement of where all that money was going, they never gave it to us. I think it's only entitled if we are involved in this, and there we got two hundred. I'll bet you that settlement, part of that settlement, two hundred thousand was part of our money that went for this organization. Okay? So I'm just saying, I would like a financing on the breakdown on where they... I mean, we found out that they had a building that they were renting that they never used.
That was years ago, right?
Right, so.
Two thousand five.
I'm not saying that it's gonna happen here, but I think it's only best for the interests of the city of Wooddale and the residents that we get camel finance and, and where their, their money's being spent.
I can tell you their accountant is, their accountant is Mayor Prine, so.
I don't care who it is. I just think it's time for us to see that where the money is being used.
Mr. Murs?
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, I think we're in safer hands now. The treasurer of SOC is our, our friendly mayor to the west, Mayor Prine. He keeps good records and he does audits, and we have the numbers, and we'll certainly share them with you if you like. But I tend to, to trust his numbers. And the idea was this, that, that it's not just Wooddale. All the communities that are a member of SOC have agreed that to go to their boards and set aside some money just in case, you know, everybody, Bensonville, Roselle, everybody that goes, Elmer's, whoever, is all gonna do the same.
I totally agree with that. Again, I don't care if it's who the accounting person is. I think we only title it to see those documents.
Sure.
Yeah, we'll get it. I will carry on. All right.
What are we, what are we gonna try to accomplish? That's, that's my question. Having, having sat on the technical committee for going on four years now, and even the recent past conversations, I, I, I don't know what it is that you can do.
Well, that's the thing, the glide slope is probably gonna come under consideration. I mean, let's face it, we, we go to those same meetings, and when we start talking, they'll start talking about crosswinds and this wind and wind speeds. And we cannot refute anything they say because we're not, definitely not experts in the field. Supposedly, these guys are, and they may be able to help us. That's, if we can get the planes up higher, naturally, we're gonna reduce the noise.
Jeff?
Also, one of the, one of the main initiatives is how they measure the noise impact. And there's some legislation or ways that it's measured in California that's kind of cutting edge, that they had talked about possibly making O'Hare measure the noise that way and talk to federal legislators on that. That was one of the things that was discussed.
You have these towns involved with this. Do you, is, probably Peter Jacobs can answer this question. Does a fair group go to these meetings too? Or are they not invited to it?
Not invited.
Um, it is a posted, open meeting. We do post, everybody's invited. We've had residents of Wooddale attend. SOC, though, does not solely focus on O'Hare Noise. There's a plethora of other issues, so don't think it's just an O'Hare Noise Committee.
The solution. Rusty Woods. Elgin O'Hare.
Yeah, I, I'm hopeful that we can change things, but just at the past technical committee, that, that was the issue of my specific question. No matter what monitoring, what metering, how you do it, none of that affects their modeling. So unless you can change their modeling, none of those numbers matter. We, we can, we can get the best system in here and get the best engineers and tell you what the actual numbers are. They don't use them, and that's by FAA guidelines. That was my specific question, that was the specific answer. We had the chief pilot from United there, we had FAA there. You know, this, this has been an ongoing, as the mayor knows, I mean, like you said, we go to the same meetings, but, so... I'm, I'm not, not against it or opposed to doing it, but it's, you know, we need to focus on the right thing to change. And getting the data is one thing. Getting them to use that as their new modeling, to come up with the contours, that's the other thing. So, I mean, the focus needs to be changing the FAA guidelines for that modeling, i.e. that would be, I mean, federal law, I would imagine.
Jeff?
Yeah, our state legislators that are, are down in DC have, have taken a close eye, a close watch on this, and I think they are wanting us to even go down there and discuss this with them. And they wanna take the lead on this, and they're interested in, in this legislation that you're talking about. So that's one of the things we're talking about with people that know the legislation down there, people in DC that can work with the mayors here and work with our federal legislators down there. So you're right.
Tony?
What does soundproofing end up in this organization? Do they have something to do with the soundproofing?
Yeah, again, a specific question I asked. So that noise data has no relevance to sound insulation. So unless they change the modeling, and when they do that modeling, they can increase the contour, which we know it has increased, uh, nothing will happen with the sound insulation. No, we can, we can leave, I'm, I'm not, I'm, I'm... I'm just saying that, that the focus, we need to have the right focus.
Water and sewer expenses?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I mean, again...
No, go ahead.
Again, just the same presentation, different projects. The only one that you won't see listed in here is that first one, which is the War Two Streets. That's back on page thirteen. It's just the, the water component of it versus the, the above-ground, you know, street by two minutes product portion of it. So being said, just move on to... So page forty-four, the hard copy, maintenance of reservoir tanks three, four, and five. And this will finish up tank number five, which is the last one in the rotation of reservoir tanks that need to be maintained.
Good. Before we go into this stuff here, about the tanks and stuff, it says plant, plant maintenance. Could you tell me, it says tank three, four, and five? Now, we have a sewer treatment plant, what's this compared to that? What was redone, what was it? Or is this totally separate? You follow what I'm saying? What was included with our contract versus what we have here now?
I can defer to Mr. York, I mean, they're, they're completely separate functions.
Okay, you follow my question now?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's, the treatment plants wastewater, this, I believe, is for the potable water, for, for clean water, correct?
Yeah, I think, I think the confusion comes in at how the, the GL account is written. Basically, this project here is a water reservoir tank. So it has nothing to do with the treatment plant. This is potable water, drinking water.
Drinking?
Drinking, good water, yummy water. Not poopy water.
From the Chicago, that's...
Yes.
That's our increase there, stuff.
Yes.
Okay. So does that, I guess my question is, what pages are we talking about that here? Because I'm, my next question is gonna be the same thing, I'm at page forty-five, is that the same thing then?
Yes, forty-five is... Forty-five is a drinking water as well.
It would be the same thing for forty-six, forty-seven, and two?
Forty-six and forty-seven. Forty-six and forty-seven would be wastewater.
Yeah, you know, when we get to the sheets, we can try and identify what, what portion of the system.
Well, then, keep in mind that I wanna talk about that section, which is included in that.
Sure.
When we get to that page.
Yeah, this is any other questions on the reservoir tank, we can move on to the... Next one, as Mr. York said, is maintenance on the, the potable water facilities, the clean water site again. And as the mayor pointed out, one of these, I believe, was actually, this was actually approved earlier this evening. And then future years, anyway, I gotta talk about too much, but, you know, a generator, an underground storage tank, and then more pump work in the out years, so. The next page, the south treatment plant facility, does deal with the wastewater component. However, this is the south treatment facility, the one off of Brookhurst, by the golf course, kinda in the middle there. And isn't specifically related to the current treatment plant rehabilitation program. And it's also in a, in an out year, as well, the clarifier covers.
Keep in mind, that's, that's also doing the, the south plant facility maintenance on that one. It's, it's the pride, try to bring that treatment plant up to the state code too, that we have to eventually, if we want to keep going.
Sure, the next page, page forty-seven, is for the north treatment plant facility, wastewater facility. And these, this, specifically this project in fiscal sixteen, the clarifier covers, and work on the existing sledge building. These are for the clarifiers that weren't the existing clarifiers. And then the sledge building, same questions, I'm sure can opine on that, but the, the existing sledge building would get some work done. But this is wastewater in nature as well.
I guess I just have one question, why wasn't this included with the wastewater project? And the whole treatment plant? I mean, it is an upgrade to the treatment plant, so I'm not sure, why wouldn't it have been included?
There are portions of the treatment plant that were not touched by the rehabilitation of the treatment plant. The existing clarifiers is one of them, the sledge building, the annex. Those, those facilities have not been rehabbed, aren't part of the project, aren't new construction. Obviously, I wasn't here for the whole design of this project, but not everything was gutted and started over. So while we're doing a thirty million dollar rehab to ninety-five percent of the plant, that five percent that is left over still needs to be upkept. The upkeep still needs to be on those, so we can keep the operations of the plant running efficiently.
Eugene?
I'll tell you the truth, why that's an upcap rate? Because that way, added bigger costs. I mean, we kicked the treatment plant down the road for almost five years or six years until we finally came to senses that we had to do something. And, and we had hard enough time getting the treatment plant updated now, and you wanna add two more buildings? And it just didn't, and, and it would be a lot different if you had a brand-new site than you could did all at once. But if you notice how the treatment plant was done, it was done in phases. And the reason why we had to do it in phases is to keep the treatment plant up and running. Now, if you guys wanna go ahead and update those buildings down the line, be all means, to get it brand-new. But then you're gonna have to meet the IPA rules, you have to go down there, get another loan if that's the case. But it was hard enough getting what we wanted to do to the treatment plant from anywhere up here.
Yeah, the existing clarifiers would be replaced, and I believe it would be phase two of the project. But I'm not exactly sure on the cost of that, but I think that's up over seven, eight digits as well, up in the ten, ten million dollars again, to add that, to take out these existing clarifiers.
And just to be clear, I wasn't saying that we needed to do that, I was just saying, this is an upgrade, it's, it's fixing something. Why just, you know, this three fifty wasn't included in the whole project, that's all I was asking.
Richard Rowan, Park Street Maintenance?
Yeah, it looks like, you know, per the, per the description, pressure relief valves, pressure adjusting stations. You know, a significant part of this project, I believe, was done last year, and this is kind of the, the next, the final phase of that project, if I'm interpreting correctly.
Next, the lift station rehabilitation program?
Correct, sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, the lift station rehabilitation program, last year in the budget, we had plugged some numbers into the out years just for funding purposes, you know, allocation purposes. Earlier in the late summer, fall, staff had a study of all of the lift stations done. And an outfall of that were the numbers that are presented in this year's CAP for their recommended maintenance upgrades, replacement, SCADA upgrades, fixes, et cetera. So that's what's presented here, this year is a direct result of that study.
Mayor?
Yeah, Matt, going through the study that we received, I see no fall protection, cheap floats, no lifting chains, a lot of these field observations and whatnot. And I know this, this project's gonna have to be done, otherwise, if one of these malfunctions, I know this room will be full of people coming in. My question is, do we have standards? Because even the new lift station we put in had some issues with the cheap floats and whatnot. So, I mean, I think we should have some kind of guideline if we ever put up a new one for some reason. And just to make sure that some of this stuff is taken care of.
Yeah, I mean, as we just, as we go throughout this project, and, and we've put some money in for the, the next fiscal year for the design of the first replacement, which would be in two thousand seventeen FY, that we would come up with a set of standards, just like we're doing for all of our other projects. You know, have the correct safety requirements, as long, just as long with the same, same kind of pumps and all the floats and all the things that we need. Come up with a standard set so that each of these stations, as we move down the line, will be very similar to each other. It'll help us with, one, for, to have a constant knowledge of the, of the stations. Instead of this station does this thing, this station does that. And try to keep... Instead of this station does this thing, this station does that, um, and try to keep things as uniform as possible.
Basically, I saw, one, you guys are going to determine maybe you don't need it, or might be other alternatives.
Yeah, that, that was brought up in this study, that there, there may or may not be a need for, um, a station. I think when we get closer to the, um, that station needing to be rehabbed or rebuilt, uh, that's when we really take a strong look at what we can do to modify the sewers around that, around that location to make it gravity fed. And then abandon that sewer, or abandon that lift station.
And, and what about, a couple of them, I think, didn't have standby power. I mean, it's not, we don't have, if the power goes out, we're out of luck over there?
Well, there are some stations that don't have standby power and that we can monitor. Some stations don't need to be quote unquote, "running" twenty-four hours a day. There are certain things like, case in point, the metro lift station. When we lost down, when we lost that lift station over there, we don't have backup power over there. We could go over there once a day, twice a day, um, and, um, pump out the sewage out of there and take back to the, take back to the, um, plant and dump it into the system there. So, um, as we go through these systems and as we go through these lift stations, there's some that we know that, you know, the pumps run every eight minutes, every five minutes. And there are some that the pumps don't run, but maybe once every two or three hours, and they may only run for, you know, thirty seconds for that time. But there's still quite a bit more, um, capacity within that station. So, um, we have contingency that if those stations go down without power, we know how, how fast we need to get out there to, to manually pump those stations down.
My question, Matt, question on two thousand sixteen. What, what lift station was that we were going to rehab or, or work on first?
I believe the first lift station in the program is the Edgebrook one, the one at two seventy-seven Edgebrook.
That's by Simba's daycare, right?
Yeah.
All right, may, may I just ask a question on that? We may not have to do as much upgrade on that, because we don't know what the treatment plant's going to be able to handle on the excess flow yet, because we haven't gone through a season with it. Okay, so why would we? So I'd like to go, my opinion is go through a year and see if we might not have to do as much upgrade, because if the new treatment plant could higher handle the excess flow, which that's the reason why the treatment plant went bigger. And that is, is there a way that we could flip that one and hold off a year on that until we go through a full cycle of rain season? To see, or, or not? I, I, I'm not an engineer, so I'm just pointing it out.
I'm not either. Um, what I believe, um, is that the station needs to be upgraded. One, for a safety factor, it's a can system, there's a confined space element to it, uh, the pumps are bad. There's a lot of things other than just the treatment plant. We've, the main purpose of a lift station is that it can't go gravity. So it's got to go over a hump and get down the hill in order to get to the treatment plant. So, the treatment plant itself, I don't think will have that much bearing on the lift station. It may have a slight bearing on, you know, is it two five hundred gallon a minute pumps versus two three hundred gallon a minute pumps? Or something like that. And we should have some good data, um, hopefully this fall, that we can utilize. And maybe not take this thing out to the design until, you know, November or October of next year, where the designers, we can... But once we get, once we go out for design and we start working with the company, whatever the engineering firm is, then we can get them that data and, and really design a nice, a nice first, you know, newer lift station for us here.
I, I have one follow-up on that. The, the reason why you bring this up, the reason why we, we purchased that piece of property, too, is we were looking, looking at doing something on that property to do something with that lift station down the line. So I'll bring up the scenario like the mayor brought up. We spend three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars now, in two years down the line, or a year down the line, we decide to build a structure there on that piece of property we bought? So...
And that, that's great, and I mean, at some point in time, maybe offline, we can have a conversation about that. But needless to say, whatever sewer pipe goes in, into that thing right now, still needs to get to the treatment plant. Maybe we'll make a pretty lift station there.
So, this lift station will not be done until end of twenty sixteen? My understanding is right?
The construction of the lift sta, the construction of the lift station itself will not take place until at least May first of two thousand and sixteen. It'll be done a whole budget year from now. Eight, it won't start for another eighteen months or so.
So, as the sewer treatment plant's being done here, is there a way of just watching that lift station and figuring out the level of where that's going to be? Because the residents in that area, they don't deserve to live in human waste when it overflows. And I don't really, I don't even want to wait one more day to fix this problem. It's not fair to the residents that, that, in the city, that when it overflows, this human waste is coming out of it.
Um, I'm not going to disagree with you on that, and everybody can write that down. I agree with Roy on something today. Write that one down, too. But as I'll put on my financial cap, I will say, cash flows probably don't make this very feasible to do immediately. But I can ask Mr. Wilson and see if we can, uh, move some things around.
For cash flow, when it comes to the safety of the residents? I don't care what the cash flow is. You guys figure it out. Residents, the residents first.
If that's what we want to do, I mean, uh, to get it designed and built, um, and fiscal, get it designed, we'd have to start designing right now, um, in order to have it built, because you want to build it next spring or next summer. And at the same time, you're going to have a road construction project in that area. So now you're going to have a road construction contractor, a ditching contractor, a landscape contractor, along with a, uh, lift station rehabilitation contractor, all within an area that's going to be inundated anyway.
Yeah, just to interject, what Matt, Matt said is, is correct. Hopefully, to, to clear it up a little bit, so the, the lift station keeps getting overrun, which is a, a health issue over there. So it has to be done sooner than later, but with the improvements, that should help with the surcharging, which is the, the big culprit of overrunning that lift station. So, and, and combining those two projects, I think that's what we talked about before, to push it back one year. So by doing the roads and, and the drainage in there, that should help reduce that lift station being overrun. And, and I think right now, we're doing it in the most expedient, timely, cost-effective way to, to take care of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt, when they're, they're finishing up the design for the rest of those two streets, and there was talk about, basically with the property we purchased, how the waters, some of the water's going to flow over land or whatnot, till it's a ditch and then go underneath the street. Is that right? I mean...
Uh, I seem to remember that. I have to look at the design to be positive.
Right, and as far as the, the lift station, I mean, once the treatment plant is done, there should be less head pressure across the street and should help this thing out, but not, it's not going to fix the problem.
No, the, the solution isn't, it, once again, it's not a magic bullet. There's not going to be a one solve on this one. The lift station needs to get rebuilt, because the lift station needs to get rebuilt. That's one thing. The plant getting fixed is going to help with the head pressure, yes. The amount of non-sewage water getting into the sewer system and causing, um, backup during a rain event is also going to, is also going to help, too, by moving the water to where it should be instead of going over by the, by the lift station, going into the, the wet well and backing up the system that way and surcharging the system. So, um, we've got a lot of things going in our favor on this. I would like to, um, probably keep, keep the, keep the plans as they are in the book so we can, uh, really do a good job designing this lift station and not, and not rush it either. And make sure that we get it exactly the way that we want it.
Yeah, this is the, the city's portion that's not covered by any grant funding within the, um, intersection safety project. Again, this number probably a little in flux, um, as we get closer to bidding. Might be a little low, so it could be a little bit higher, so.
Could you give me the cost effect, how much it cost last year for the water main breaks? On Irving Park Road within, probably last year?
I know we had that one break, um...
There was one by Sweet Baby Ray's?
Yeah, east of Wooddale.
There was one. Okay, east of Wooddale would be Sweet Baby Ray's, over there. There was another one. By the Bowling Alley, and there's four, Matt is saying. Are we, would you say for those water main breaks is, um, with the black top? Because I know there was some cost with replacing the black top and everything. Would you say that throughout the year, it costs us, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more? Because I know one, one thing was for doing the road was, was fifty thousand dollars.
No, the road was, I believe it was twenty-one or twenty-two thousand?
For one?
Was the road, yeah, that's the only one that we outsourced. All the other ones, we did in-house, with in-house staff. I mean, we could, I could do some work on the timing, but...
What, what I'm looking at here is we got two hundred thousand dollars here. We know we're going to have to replace that water main at one time or another. Probably sooner than later, too, because it's costing us more every year as it lines getting older. Could we start putting some money into that and do sections or something like that? Because it's going to be a million, what was the cost on it, over a million dollars?
Yeah, I think it was somewhere two million ballpark, and we had, we had de-prioritized that. One, because of the price tag. Two, the breakages weren't really that bad in frequency.
But they're coming.
Well, I mean, still, that's not that bad. And with this, two hundred thousand, you're getting a pretty big chunk of the water main replaced. I think both of the breaks we had are within the boundaries of this new water main now. For sure, the one by the Bowling Alley, and I think maybe as far as the one over by, well, I know by the Christie's. I think it was Christie's, not by Sweet Baby Ray's. So those are both due to be replaced, both those sections.
Okay.
Does that have to do with the water tower also, or? Is it pressure down there?
Yeah, it could have a little bit to do with that. The water tower, um, helps regulate pressure within the system between north and south. So, it probably doesn't, the current water power probably doesn't help the situation.
I'm going, going to go along with Arthur Wesley here on, uh...
Me?
Yeah. And, uh, as far as the water main on Irving Park, I mean, and I've talked to, Jeff, I talked to you about this. When we put in this new piece of section, the two sections to the east and west, they're going to be under a lot more pressure, because these are going to be really nice. We might get more cracks. I know by Juul and Target, we had like three cracks. Within, within a month, month and a half, a year or two ago. Should we, should we put in an unfunded page on this as well? So, you know, just in the unfunded, because, because the other thing that's coming up is, when are they going to resurface Irving Park? We might have to do the, you know, if they resurface Irving Park in two thousand sixteen or seventeen, I know they're going to be coming our way. So what, in two thousand eighteen, then we're going to cut the new road?
That you could take from your utility tax.
I, I think we're going to need to be on top of this, want to make sure we see when Irving Park is going in. I keep hearing different dates on Irving Park, but...
Jeff?
Yeah, we can, we can put this back as a sheet, reevaluate. Again, the reason it's not a higher priority is, not massive breaks and the, the price tag is, is really going to screw with all the other projects. It's enormous.
But if, again, if they cut up the road and our businesses are going to endure another summer when they start doing Irving Park, then, then Wooddale's going to do them a big favor two years later and, uh, slow down their business again. It's a real headache when they're doing work on Irving Park.
Why don't we try to do the work at the same time?
That's, that's what I'm getting at. If we should, we should coordinate. We should be putting in our water mains before they're coming in to do the resurface or reconstruction, whatever they're going to do.
Have the water, you get the power lines, power lines, water main, and street.
It's possible, yeah.
Roy?
It's two million dollars, correct?
That was the ballpark. I don't know how accurate that is, around there.
I'm probably going to say a wrong thing here, but I'm going to say it anyways. How much is in reserves? Six months? No, I'm not, I'm not looking to go in our reserves. Again, we could use this on your utility tax. Again, that's probably another question that you could ask. Could we use TIF money for that, too?
I mean, this is, uh, you know, in, in the pure sense of water project. Um, and so the, the water, uh, fund balance, um, significantly lower than the general fund, uh, fund balance right now. Uh, because we've been drawing it down, the water rate conversation, a couple of months ago, we've been drawing it down to try and moderate those. So the, the cash balance in the water funds, not near where it was a few years ago, nor, uh, to the level of the, of the general operating fund itself. The, your last question about the TIF, it's outside of the TIF district, and there's really no nexus between the two, so a bit out of the box on that one. Um, and then the, uh, the non-home rule and or utility tax, I mean, again, you know, providing, you know, we could work out the funding, um, I mean, water main would be infrastructure, you know, so.
No, shoot, we're almost done. Eileen, you're okay?
Carry on with the Mill Road wat, water main replacement.
Yeah, thank you, I mean...
I just want to ask Jeff about Itesca.
Well, just wanted to point out that, um, you'll notice in the narrative here, um, the city's already, uh, uh, received, or that we've received one grant for four hundred thousand relative to this project, and we've applied for another one. Um, I always mess up the acronym, but it's a, a block grant for another four hundred thousand, um, that we're hopeful to get as well. So, so that'll help, definitely help, uh, the cost of this project. And then, uh, you remember, uh, you know, an hour, hour and fifteen minutes ago, we talked about the street resurfacing. Uh, we are going to redo Mill and some of the streets that, that feed into Mill at the same time, uh, since we're going to be tearing, uh, tearing that section of town up anyways.
Has, has Itesca committed to this whatsoever? Are they even... Has, has ITCSCA committed to this whatsoever, are they even looking at it? I mean...
Yes, they're, they're aware, they're on board, syncs with their timeline. We don't have anything officially in writing yet, but we're working towards that and they're aware and supportive. Very supportive.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is one of the projects that's out a couple of years, so, look, there's no commitment is being asked for for fiscal '16, start the design next year, and then, you know, look, hopefully go forward with the construction in '18, but it's, the project's out a couple of years. Yeah, the next project's the water tower. I know there was, yeah, there, there was a study done a few years ago on the water tower. I think it's been circulated once or twice, you know, so I know the mayor has, has a comment, so...
Well, the question is, we, we did the study, they said it's in pretty good shape, and if we painted it, we'd be good for another 20 years or something. And there was about 350, 400,000. You have 50,000 in the design. I don't know if the councils changed their minds. I would say just paint it, because I keep hearing about the reduced costs and the help to the pumps, but we never get that real number that tells us we're going to save all this money on pumps and this and that. Do we need the design? If, if we're not going to, if we're just going to paint it, do we need the design? I don't know where the council stands now.
Honestly, this is more of a lengthier, more serious discussion than tonight. It's in the out year, I would recommend we bring back the report.
The design is at the budget, right?
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we're going to do, I mean...
No, no, I, I, that'll come up.
I would recommend we bring back the report and have a lengthy discussion on this topic.
Yeah, that's fine.
And then, in the interim, just leave it as is, but it's a longer discussion.
I know, you guys want it, I know. Well, it's, I'm just, I don't, you know, never know, people change their mindset.
Yeah, this is the, and I'll say this with the, the, you know, tongue-in-cheek. Hopefully, the last phase of the FOB project, so once the treatment plant's done, to go through and FOB the remaining buildings over at the 269 facility. So far, as you're all aware, this building's been done, with the admin building, a couple of other buildings over at 269 have been done. But this will catch the rest of the buildings, predominantly the ones that weren't, that didn't exist when this project was done last year, at this time last year. Yeah, this is just the, the runout, hopefully the last two months of the project into the next fiscal year. As you're aware, you know, the money flows back through the IEP A, so... Correct, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is, you may remember, we had a rather lengthy conversation about this program last year at this time, shortly thereafter. So, what this does is it does the design, the engineering for the, the last phase that had been studied. There are no new areas being considered at this time. There is, I believe, part of the, the agreement with the new treatment plant at IEP A is that we do continue the program. However, we're going to have, the council wanted to take a harder look at the cost of sort of that program and what the program was actually accomplishing. But, they wanted to finish everything that had been done before moving forward with another phase. So, this would get us to that point where everything that had previously been started has actually had a finality at that point. The 14, yeah, that, that had been, had been done before this was...
Yes, so what this would be is areas two and three of the, I'd have to get, I can get you a map for sure, but area over by Maya Montclair, that area is one area. And then, there's some area over like by Forest Reserve and Gilbert, I believe. And then, there's some out in Ward 3, kind of over by the high tension wires. Basically, what we're looking to do this year is have them finalize analysis of taping, sewer taping, and then do some, some point, either point repairs or some slip lining or manhole repairs like we've done in the last couple of years.
I'll defer to Mr. York on this one.
Yes, there's some blowers that we have at the, at the current North Treatment Plant that are not going to be able to be utilized at the North Treatment Plant in the future due to the new ones that are coming online. They're in good condition. What we'd like to do is move them to the South Plant, which will allow the South Plant to become more efficient.
Yeah, just on the, the three unfunded items, obviously, we moved one of the unfunded items into being funded. That's the exterior window wall. And then, pages 59 and 60 kind of coincide with one another. And the only reason I want to talk a little bit about it is there's going to be a report coming to the council on that first council meeting in February on the new Public Works Building. I know when we had talked about this a year or two ago, it was decided that, hey, let's not bring this up until we're closer to the end of the treatment plant project. So, now we're closer to the end, and we've got some ideas we want to throw over to the council and see what they're thinking. So, we'll actually be talking about this in a couple of weeks. And then, just for clarification, the, yeah, then the page after that, the, is the exterior window wall, which had previously been moved into fund, the funded section, so... Unless there's anything else, that's all I have.
Are, are we making, I'm sorry. Are we making a motion to approve this with all those changes, or waiting until it comes back?
Yeah, well, we...
What, what, I'm asking finance?
Yeah, what we've done in the previous years is the motion's just been to move forward with it, taking into account all the changes, and then, we'll, we'll just put those into the budget. We'll also, in the past years, maybe we've been putting that golden rod page in there, just outlining the, the changes instead of reproducing the entire document.
So, you need, do we need a motion to approve?
Yeah, just consensus, you had a good move forward with all the changes.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
CIP with the changes that we have discussed tonight.
Yep.
Aye.
Future meetings? No one? Brad?
Just clarifications, you know, the, the budget book itself, the binder, is expected to come out February 13th. February 13th, day before Valentine's Day.
I have my red pad, it's for sure.
And then, two weeks later at that committee, I believe it is February 26th, would be the, the first budget, first budget meeting. The second would be March 12th. And then, also, it was referenced in the, the audit memo we put out last week. We're now out of, out of contract on audit, so the staff will be preparing and sending out an RFP, hopefully end of this month, early next month, and looking to bring the results back late February, early March.
Need a motion for adjournment?
So, move.
Mr. Paver?
Aye.
Boast? Motion carries for adjournment.